Okay, at this time I'll call the June 12th, 2014 meeting to order. If you'd please stand and join in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The item before us is approval of the agenda, and we do have one addition to the agenda, and this would go under other business. It's the second bid for replacement of the roof at the transfer station. An odd move that we approve that amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our consent agenda includes the minutes of the June 5th work session and our regular meeting and fund expenditures of $179,587.76.
May we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead and Craig, start with you on commissioner comments.
Yeah, Laura and I attended a KAC meeting yesterday here in the basement of the courthouse. Fundamental leadership, a very good program. And that's all I have.
It's about the same for me. I can say we, I thought the presenter at our meeting yesterday was very good. Brought in a lot of his own experiences with leadership and classes that he taught and vast, like I say, array of different things that he had done. It made it interesting and just showed kind of how the different styles of leadership that people have and things that sometimes we are strong in in other areas, but where we can. So it's always good to kind of evaluate that so that you have an idea of areas that you can improve on.
Okay. Earlier this morning, we did have a meeting with the department heads, and they just gave us some brief summation reports of what they're doing, and also elected officials were there. Yesterday, I did attend a field exercise that they had over at Fort Riley. We met at the Riley Conference Center, and about 400 of us by bus were able to go out to the field. They had some Bradley tanks, they had some, they involved the air force, and the helicopters, and kind of had a live ammo type engagement with some enemy that they had brought in. It is kind of a, of course, a lot of that was done manually, but you know, it's just amazing to see the way those tanks can just, you know, the target's a mile and a half away, and just to be on that viewing stage and observe that. It really gives you an appreciation for the preciseness of, that they have, and also the great job that our military does. And also, after that, they had a luncheon, and AUSA and the Military Affairs Council of Manhattan and Junction City co-sponsored the luncheon and had General Dotson speak. And you know, it gives you a great appreciation for what they do, but also, that's a pretty big installation over there and has quite an economic impact throughout the immediate area, but also surrounding counties. Next Monday, I'll attend the annual or monthly meeting for Central Kansas Mental Health as the representative board member of the council. And that's all I have for right now. Oh, I might just mention real quick, we did have, Mike Townsend came in, who's the chairman of the Economic Development Council Group, and Janelle was there and several others to just kind of give us an update. They've visited with the city of Abilene to offer a request. Of course, they're in their budget process. And then they've also, you know, talked to us about, $150,000 was the number that they plugged in, and for our consideration during our budget. And one of the things helpful on this is they are going to be going to other cities. They have scheduled to go down and visit with the folks at Harrington, but they, you know, plan on going around to the community, so it is a community-wide effort. And so, I appreciated the update that they gave us and all the work that they did. We do not have any proclamations or petitions. If there's any other public comments that anyone would want to make on anything that isn't on the agenda, you could do so at this time. Moving on then, we will hear our report from our county administrator, Brad Holman.
Okay, in your package, you've got a number of items I provided you, but I'll start out with a couple of letters that we received. One is from Pete Davis, who's a ratio study supervisor with Kansas Department of Revenue. And he has provided us the final appraisal sales ratio study. Basically, it's the evaluation of the performance of our appraiser and the appraisal personnel and of the properties that they have appraised and certified this year. And as always, I'm very pleased to report that that total market median ratio is 99.5%. 99.6 is for residential only, which what that tells us is that the market matches what the appraiser has appraised the values of property at. So, very accurate, and we're always very pleased to see those reports. So, you also have another letter in there that is from the Kansas 911 Coordinating Council, and the chairman, Walter Way, of that council basically gave us a kudos letter for the work that Sherri Massey, or GIS director, has provided to the council. Sherri sits on that council and participates in that, and they're very deeply embedded in the developing the next generation 911 standards across the state. And that's a big thing when it comes to emergency services. It all starts right there. So, Sherri's done a good job in providing her expertise and providing them with support, and that's his appreciation for that. I very much appreciate her commitment there, and it really makes us look better to get that, so. You also have a copy of Section 605A of the county policy handbook, which basically amends that policy to coincide with the new statute or bill that has become law July 1st. We had in our policy employees that are consumer carry certified, and they could not carry a weapon unless they had reported that to their supervisor. The law specifically said we can't do that, so we have amended that personnel policy, and we'll put that on agenda for next week to address it, so. End up being that with what, no too long enough to get that direction, so. Uh, let's see, I'll do the easy ones first. You've got a schedule also of the budget meetings coming up. We've already talked about that a little bit, starting at June 26th. If we get this done, the three meetings starting at 8:00 after our regular work session, so. We did have, I told you last week, we had a safety inspection by the Kansas Department of Labor, which is a routine inspection. I've since received a report on that. They did find about seven items, deficiencies across the, between the courthouse, highway shop, and the landfill. They were all situated very easily curable, a couple outlets that need to be replaced, a handrail going up the steps of the sol shed at the highway department, and a drain cover down in the boiler room, so very easy things. It's always really nice to have a different set of eyes and different perspective on that, because the work has been through the building and our facilities a number of times. Those are things they didn't pick up on, and very possibly, if they were to come out the next day, they might have found some different items too that need to be done, so it helps us be a little bit safer for our employees and the public. We're getting those taken care of, and we'll be reporting some minutes back to them. I'm also working on trying to put together a class, to host a class for our township's motor grader operators. And as you're aware, at the township meeting, it was brought up that they are requiring CDL licenses to operate the motor graders because of their weight, the weight of the grader exceeds the statute or the limit. And we basically found out that none of them do, so I've contacted Highway Department, waiting on a response back from them. I just talked to them yesterday, but it was requested of them if we would host a class to try and help them prepare for that test. I think that'd be a good thing for us to do, and so, I'm working on that, trying to get that done for them. We'll try to get something going. I also was over at the county trees office yesterday and talked to Andrea and Daryl, and they would like to have a small foyer-type area in the front, right inside the door, similar to what we did here at the sheriff's department, which I think is very reasonable. Currently, they lock the doors, so you have to come up and knock because of some threats and incidents that have happened, and I think we can do that very easily, so I'm in the process of having to get some bids from a couple of vendors, the one that did this one, and we've got another one that we contacted, to see if we can just put a little enclosure in the front there with a locking door that they can push a bit of like people through. At least they'd be able to get in out of the weather and wait there, and if they are a problem, or if it's somebody that they don't want to let in, they don't have access to come on in, I think that would increase the security level over there tremendously. So, Sherri also advised me this morning that she has received the pictometry database, aerial photography, we've been waiting on, and they're in the process of going through that and evaluating it. So far, it looks very good, which wasn't the case last time when the last aerial photography we got a couple of years ago. You may recall, we had to send it back and have some of it redone, so. So far, this looks very good. She, if that continues, she plans on trying to get that uploaded onto the system by the end of next week, and so it'll be available for everybody to use out there, and then we'll be scheduling training for staff, people to use that data as well, to know how to use it. Jumping back up to the Rock Springs Ranch update, and I'd updated you a little bit last week, told you that we've been out and met with him. I was just going to run you through briefly kind of what we've discovered so far, and I can easily show you on the screen here. What we're discovering, which we discover a lot when we're dealing with historical data and land, is that we really don't have any good accurate records that date back through the last 130 years or so on this. But what you're looking at is the, this is the north boundary line, this is Gary County, or at the time that this was platted, it was Davis County, and this is the county line, this is Rock Springs Ranch. This is Dickinson, and over to the east here is Morse County. This is the county line, three-way county line. And if you remember last week, I kind of briefed you that we have two items of contention down there. There's a small bridge right in here that has been washed out on the, on this road, it kind of goes around there, it has access to these properties in Gary County. Then there's another small plank structure right here underneath my hand that has also washed out with the heavy rains they had out there here a month or two ago. They have since put the planks back on, but I'm not so sure this morning, they may all wash out again. The property owner here was demanding that the county go out and repair that structure so he can get in. Rock Springs Ranch is very pleasantly asking that we repair this one. What we have done is gone back to 1883, I believe it was, when this was first developed. A gentleman by the name of Dixon owned the property, and this public, these lines are what we have platted out from the original road record in 1883 as to where the purple line, if you go by the legal description, this is the right-of-way that was purchased from the Dixon family back then. The reason, and now from this point forward, I'm going to give you some speculation on behalf of what John has researched and what Ricky downstairs has researched in Sherri's department. Legal description describes this as going from here over to the oak tree, down to the rock, around the bluff, over to the, you know, and that's the type of description that's actually on this. It appears, and if you look at this, of course, this is the high spot, and it goes around, it's lowered because of the creek. It appears they tried to follow around where the creek was at along the edge of the creek, jumped across the creek here, in that area, cut across, and then shot over to the county line to corner the county line. What we do know, that 20 yards over on the county line is where this is supposed to be, which equates to 1,320 feet. So this red line that you see that kind of follows that is what we believe the intent was at the time they created a road right-of-way. We don't know why it was that way, but you can kind of see where they followed the creek and come around, come up to the county line, and then follows the county line over. What this does is tell us, we believe it tells us two things. First of all, for all practical certainty, we know that this bridge is not in Dickinson County, so that one, as far as our responsibility is in the picture. As much as the landowner may or may not want to hear that, we don't have any jurisdiction there. When we talk about the one right down here, we've always wondered why this little structure was placed there and why they thought the county had the responsibility to maintain it. Well, we think by looking at the legal description, that the road at one time went across there, and that's probably why it was placed there. So that brings us to the question, well, let me back up. The road right-of-way today, you can kind of see this area right here that follows this down right to there, that's what we show as public road right-of-way. We don't know why that's there. We have no documentation to show why it was ever put there, but it is legally road right-of-way. We think that in '86, when they did the reappraisal, that the people that did that thought, well, that looks like a pretty good public road, so we'll just put it on the map as a public road. Have no idea why it's there, can't explain it. We have found nothing to justify it. So going on to what speculation we believe the intent was with this original 1883 plating of this road, and the fact that road is there, we come to the juncture of how do we want to deal with this with Rock Springs? In 1986, Jim Heck tells us, when we talked to him, our previous county engineer, that he had a meeting out there with them as the director of Rock Springs Ranch, and it was agreed upon, the gentleman at the scene, that Dickinson County would put that bridge in, we would get it up to speed, and then we would turn it over to Rock Springs Ranch and then on out. It was theirs, their responsibility. That was done, the bridge was put in, we had no documentation other than Jim's recollection that that agreement was in place. The previous director is deceased, and we still have the bridge there, and they say it's our responsibility. So, where do we go from here is the $64 question. My suggestion would be that I meet with Rock Springs again, provide them the data I just explained to you in the background, and say, we would be agreeable to go in and redeck that, which is going to be minimal cost for us. I think the guys can do it in a day or two. With an agreement that you would allow us to vacate this right-of-way legally and vacate anything in here, so we get it documented that this is all private property then, and from that point out, you guys agree, Rock Springs, agree to take responsibility for the bridge. We get it blessed and stamped, and the original state's office is officially documented, and we don't ever have this problem again. So, questions?
That seems reasonable.
The top up here is the east, that's the east, up the top.
This is north.
That's north, okay.
Yeah. This is T-157, that comes in from the north, the state highway that comes into Rock Springs Ranch.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, the house is right up there where the caretaker used to live. Yeah, that's the leadership right on, okay. I'm trying to figure out where I am. This comes up here, the Williams diagonal up in here.
This bridge is out.
Okay.
You have the barn and stuff.
You can't see the road, but there is a road there apparently.
The gravel or?
On this one over here.
No.
That's beer.
No, there's a road there. That's a road that goes around, it actually goes up the hill, and it's a paved road.
Oh, it is.
And comes up around here and then jogs back around. This is the church, if you've been to Rock Springs Ranch.
Yeah.
Then you come down around here, and this is the barn with the writing stables and stuff. So, there are water tires right here, this is a swimming pool down the hill, this is probably high enough across here.
So it is essential.
It is an essential bridge, and I, we questioned the same thing, because you can get out this way. There's a low water bridge right over here that Rock Springs does, they built and maintain. There's also another one in here. They got, just here a couple of weeks ago, they had 247 students that got stranded up on this high side because the water was running well over the low water bridge here. This had been washed out, they couldn't get back to the other side of the property. And I can't scroll up because this is a PDF, but if you go, if you go south here, there's no way to get off of their campus without getting over here to Yard Road and following it around or getting to this one.
Because this road here goes on around.
It circles around right down here and comes back here.
Yeah, because you can come up the stables from the backside of it.
Right, exactly. And you have to get over to this area to get on the opposite side of the low water bridge or on the opposite side of this one before you can get back around to Yard Road or get a T-157 to get out, so. I was trying to come up with a solution where we could meet them halfway and, without just completely washing our hands up and walking away and then thinking we're trying to get out of the problem, because I don't want to dodge any of our responsibility by any means, but I think that's a reasonable solution. If we get it going and then they can take it and go from there. Someday, if they want to replace it with something bigger, being private property, they can do that with a lot more, with the legal lesser restrictions than we would have to do with permitting and everything else. And then we've talked to Dennis Cox at Gary County, the road bridge director, and they're willing to work with property owner over here and see what they can do, and that's their ballgame. I'm not even getting into that one, so. But for as long as I've been here, there's always been a question of where the county line is down there. I'm sure John can tell you the same thing. Having us been in emergency services, there's always been a question exactly where the county line is, and it's been a learning experience, but fortunately, all emergency services work very well, and you don't question that when the call comes in, but when it comes to these type of infrastructure issues, we really need to know, so.
What kind of timetable, if you're able to reach an agreement with them? I guess you'll, you just need kind of direction to go ahead and proceed with that if we're in agreement?
Yeah, if you see the decimal of the problem, I'll go out and meet with the director probably first in the week again, and if they're willing to agree to that, then I think Martin can send the crew down there. We're talking, like I said, we're only talking a day or two, I think. It's not a major project by any means.
Would they put a steel deck on?
No, they go, Martin says that the substructure's fine, it's just the wood plank came off. He says he's got enough decking plank down there that he can replace that. Enough used decking down there, he can replace that and make another structure that would last many years. Jim Heck was telling me when he was in the office the other day, he said, you know, I remember going out there 25, 30 years ago and dealing with that, and putting that on, and we hoped it'd last 10 or 15 years, and here we are, you know, 30 years later, it finally just forced the decking off. Bridge structure itself still sounds, so.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Think if we can get that, get that issue not only taken care of for them, but get it cleaned up so in the future, like I told John, go, so that my kids and his kids in 25 or 30 years are sitting at the table and doing the same thing again, so.
Yeah, get all the documentation done.
Right.
So that it's.
So if they'll agree to that, we'll get that done, and then we'll be back in here with a vacate order and vacate those roads, whether legal or not, we'll get it cleaned up so that it's all private property and move forward on it, so. I think it'd be a win-win for everybody, so. The last thing I have is the, you have in your packet, a bid sheet from Wildcat Services. As you remember, we had received, accepted a bid from Jesse Howard Roofing a couple of months ago for replacing the roof on the original landfill, the transfer station building out there, and that was for $11,000 and some dollars. Jesse ordered the material, they put the roof on, we had some leaking issues when I looked at it, and the work was done very poorly. It wasn't adequate, and we had him out and again looked, he told us that he would have it fixed. Since that time, he's not returning our calls, and we've been told that there's other business issues that are going to indicate, he's not going to return our calls.
Contractually, do we have to get a release form signed or something, or is there a, I guess Doug can give us some guidance or?
Yeah, we may need to send him a letter and tell him that, just so that he doesn't go out and.
Let him know that the contract hasn't been fulfilled.
Terminated for.
Yeah. And so, where we're at, as we did in the rain last week, the water came down and basically flooded the, one of the issues is where the power master goes out, it wasn't sealed around there, and it flooded our breaker box. Seth had to go out and replace all the breakers, they were just drenched, probably lucky we didn't have a fire, but then they fixed it temporarily until we could get somebody out and look at it. But there's holes in the roof, they put nails and screws in that shouldn't have been there, took them back out, and then they sealed through in the holes, and it's just terrible. And the new metal, the new metal's all going to come off and be replaced to get it done correctly, so. They essentially ruined the metal that they put on there. We had paid for the materials, the materials came in, so we added that $11,800, I think we paid $5,000 or so, a little over $5,000 for materials. Fortunately, we didn't pay for the labor, so. Bottom line is, we have to get it repaired to get it repaired soon. We seem to be in monsoon time, so we went to the second bidder and asked them to update their bid, which Wildcat did, to see if they would still honor it, and that's the $15,480. Question came up as to, you know, there's a little bit of difference there, and the difference in material metal price has changed since then, so. My request would be, when we get to that portion, is that we be allowed to contact Howard and revoke that contractual agreement, and to get Wildcat to work on materials and get it done right, so. And I believe that's all I've got in our report.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll go on to notices and communications, and just have a few here that we've received. The Naco County News, and this is from our national, for county commissioners, has their newspaper included. I just happened to pick this up, this is the Kansas Small Business Development Center, and they were out here this past week at the civic center and offering assistance to any individuals wanting to start a business or any small businesses that would want assistance as far as consultation or marketing strategies and so on. You know, one of the bankers that happened to be there at the meeting mentioned sometimes people do want to have a small business, and they have an idea, or they have a product or whatever, and they need some financial assistance, and the first thing they ask for at the bank, or one of the things that they will ask for at a bank sometimes, is a business plan, and, you know, people kind of have in mind what they want to do, but they haven't really put all the factual information that needs to be on paper, and so, this group will offer assistance on that. We also have received notice, and this shows it was forwarded to Janelle, but it was in regards to the North Central Regional Planning Commission, and it's just to advise us that the dues will once again remain the same for 2015, and this is from Doug McKinney. And of course, Craig is our representative on that particular board, so we have that information as far as the breakdown on that, if there's any questions or any of you want to look at that for review. Just a couple of things sticking together here, but we have our report from the clerk of the district court, and it's just kind of a summation of the county clerk's fee, the diversion fees. We did not have any diversion fees in this report, and this is from May. So actually, I think I gave that last week and left it in here. And then we also have a magazine from the Kansas Preservation, and it just talks about some of the preservation activities throughout the state. All right, is there any other communications any of you have received or would want to bring up?
I should have asked when Greg had done bar, but how did he filings for all the township offices and what, everybody file for positions or?
There were, I think, six townships that nobody filed for. The person in there just didn't want to file, they'll probably get written in again, or they just don't want to run again.
If they're written in, they don't have to accept it, right, or is that?
They have, I have to notify them that they've officially been nominated, and then they have to let me know that they don't want it.
Okay.
And then the other board members would suggest somebody to you to appoint.
Okay. Moving on then, we have a consideration of a resolution. We do have one resolution before us. This is to remove $25.28 in delinquent property taxes from a parcel in Woodbine, and this is something that's not been collectible from 2009, 2010. You might recall, we had a similar resolution at a previous meeting, and I know Doug, you advised us that sometimes the paperwork of keeping it on the books and so on far exceeds, so this is kind of a housekeeping activity. It's, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt resolution number 061214, naming delinquent property taxes as uncollectible.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. You have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on. The next item we will go to, this is under other business. And at this time, we have meant, we have put out that June 12th is going to be the date for opening of formal bids for the purchase of a new ambulance. And so we can go ahead and do that at this time, but also, Brad, do you have some comments on that? And I guess the other thing is, what's the procedure as far as, you know, we're interested in in a low bid or a bid that we're willing to accept, but also is there, what's the review process to make sure that it matches up with the specs that we've put out?
What we would do is open the bids today. We have two submissions. And then we'll take a week or so and let John review those, make sure they meet specs. And come back with a recommendation for what we want to do, probably available next week, John.
Yeah.
That work, so. Come back next week with that. We can provide enough time for you to review them, so. I think that would be appropriately handled. We're dealing with a pretty good sized purchase investment there, so we'll make sure that everything's in line, so.
John, do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't. I mean, that's the way we've done it in the past. It's for a few times, obviously, there'll be some exceptions, one way or the other on the bids. Because different manufacturers build trucks different ways. So, you know, we'll have to look at the exceptions and see what ones, you know, they'd be willing to accept and what we may not, so. That's what we'll do over the next weeks.
And I guess that would give time to, on any of the bidders, if we had a question, you can get some feedback or clarification from them.
That's great.
So are you going to open the bids then this time?
They must be small, UPS, everything, yeah. We did have one response from Rocky Mountain Emergency Vehicles who declined the bid, so. John, you want to come up and just take these? Let me go look in it. The first one is from A E V, American Small Vehicles.
Where's A E V out of? Might not be on the front page.
The dealer is in Columbia, Missouri. The trucks are built in Jefferson, North Carolina.
And then the second one is from Professional Ambulance of Comanche, Texas, so. I'll let John give us the answer when he gets to it. And those are the only two submissions that we've received.
I know when we had a, went around and viewed various facilities of the county and so on and up there at the EMS. I mean, it was, I was really impressed. I guess I was surprised, but it's amazing how many things you put on the ambulance. And there's so many variables and things to anticipate and all the equipment involved.
That's one department that's come a long ways and become extremely advanced in the last twenty to thirty years. Big changes have come about compared to what, at least when I started here and prior to that, what, what type of service. That, that whole, not, not just our department, but that whole culture's been able to provide. Extremely different.
I remember Joe's comments about that back in the early days, that mortician went and picked you up. And if you're still alive, when you got to town, you went to the hospital. If you were dead, you went to the mortician. So it has changed a lot since then.
And there are some stories that maybe if you weren't quite to that mortician stage, then you got there before you got where you were going.
And, you know, that was something where the funeral homes in pretty much every community or county, I mean, that's just something that kind of inherited.
And they were given the funeral homes for two reasons. They had the vehicles to be able to transport them and they had somebody on call twenty-four hours a day to pick people up.
Those were the two requirements, so they qualified.
Exactly, exactly. So, but you're right, it's moved way beyond that now and.
Like you say, it's almost a traveling hospital now when you look at these addresses.
It is. It's really a mobile emergency room is what it is.
John, do those give an amount, a base bid amount that we can document?
This one, A E V, felt that they're, that they would have too many exceptions to our bid specifications, so they, so it's PR stuff. They said that they're not going to submit.
They declined.
Yeah. Professional ambulance, the bid for, per our specs is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one sixty-six.
Is that in the range that you anticipated?
Uh, yeah. We anticipated around two-thirty, so that's within the range. That's on our freightliner chassis. We did, before we ever sent bids out, I did have a lot of conversation with Andy down at the county shops on types of vehicles that obviously they prefer to work on. It was between international chassis and a freightliner. And he was, he said that certainly they work on both, they have both. We've, the last ambulance we bought was on an international chassis, a smaller international chassis, but have had some issues with it. It was a first brand issue out of international, had some issues with it. But freightliner, Manhattan has had a couple of freightliners. They have run for several years. Obviously, my wife working over there, I have firsthand contact with them and they have had good, good issues with them. So we've, we've bet it on a freightliner chassis as opposed to international. And freightliner is a little cheaper chassis than the international chassis too, so. But it does keep them in, keep us in a medium duty. This would be replacing that van chassis that we have one left. That, that kind of hold our breath when we use it. But certainly the heavier duty ambulances have proved much more reliable for us and much less costly on repairs. Obviously, if there's something mechanical, engine wise, you know, the whole front comes off easily in the engines. It's right there. The van, it takes Andy a day to dig down to, and we had a leak one time in the truck and it took him a day to dig down to it and ten minutes to fix it and three quarters of a day to put it back together, so.
And the seal was like thirty-six cents or something?
Yeah, it was astronomical just in what the time of labor, amount of labor it took to do that, so. Brakes are last longer. All of those things are better on that bigger truck. And also we're looking at remounts, you know, at least remounting the trucks one time on those bigger chassis, so. The box, we can take the box off when it comes time and put a new truck out there.
Is that the kind of way, does that represent this company?
Yeah, this is actually the company that we built, we bought the last truck from. They were built in Columbus, Ohio, Horton in Columbus, Ohio, so. Andy, Andy and Billy both went up there and they had a mechanics class and they went through it, so. They're, they're well versed on this particular truck and went to the factory and know the AC systems and all of that part of that, so. If we choose to go with this.
So now procedurally, you're going to go ahead and review that this week and make sure that everything's covered and any questions?
Right.
We have a representative here from Professional Ambulance too, so I appreciate you giving us a bid and.
I need to shut up here today.
That's just what I was going to add.
They did, I know Steve, if you want to go through this, this mock-up here.
Oh, yeah, I, real quickly.
They lifted or not, but I don't know.
The biggest difference between Horton and A E V, the other person that I guess didn't submit a bid, is that we're all aluminum. And I can go through that, but if I could just, real quickly, just show you a two-second video and just speak from a little personal experience. I had been the EMS chief at Overland Park, Kansas for many years, and I used to buy ambulances. And on May twenty-first of oh-six, we rolled one over and the unit that I had did not have airbags. So we switched after that to the Horton. It's the only ambulance on the market equipped with airbags. Did that go?
No, maybe.
It's trying to tell me to sign up to your internet, so. Sorry.
Why is doing that, John? What is anticipated delivery time if everything would fall into place?
Well, we're hoping anticipated delivery right after the first of the year, so.
You can see the airbags being deployed in the strategic areas where the people are restrained. And this literally can save lives in the technicians that are in the back of the ambulance attempting to perform patient care in the event that the unit rolls over. And that's really the bottom line. And Horton is known for safety through innovation and testing. And it's what made me make the decision to retire from the fire department and get out on the road and sell ambulances because I'm so passionate about what Horton is doing and what we can do through innovation and testing to save lives of the people that are in the back, so.
Our current truck, Horton truck, does have the airbags. I'll come with thankfully, but never deployed. But it's nice to know they're there.
And I, was using a fleet of internationals and I thought they'll never roll. Well, we rolled on sixty-nine highway at college, between college and one-nineteenth. Rolled, middle of the day. How does that happen? Well, I still don't know exactly how it happened, but the point is, it can. And it taught me vividly and made a big impact on my life, so. And I am in Lenox, I'm the Kansas guy, so we are in Lenox, so we have a service center in Lenox. But we're really gonna, or in actually it's Overland Park, but we are really going to tie our relationship to John's mechanics, your mechanics. Who I've met, they've been to our facility. We have a new electrical, a new air conditioning upgrades that are coming. We need to get them back and get them trained on those because it's going to make a profound impact on the reliability of our truck when the people in town who put their hands on it all the time know the inner workings of the trucks. But we're here behind you, standing behind you and in Kansas to help, so.
And I will give good kudos to Andy typically. If we have any parts issues or anything like that, he calls Professional Ambulance in Texas and they are excellent in helping and getting the parts we need, so.
John, and I kind of apologize because I asked you that question with delivery time and then the video started and I glanced over, so what was?
We're looking at January, February delivery.
Okay.
And I haven't read through this. I don't know, Steve, if you know where they're at as far as if that's still a target.
That's a target.
Okay.
So, we build normally five, five-hundred-and-fifty ambulances a year. We're at sixteen-five on target for this year. It's just a really busy year, so we're, we're quoting the two-hundred-and-twenty days. And the spec asked for a fourteen. I included a fifteen at that price, so. So it'll be a fifteen freightliner chassis.
You know.
And what does that mean, the difference between those two?
The only real difference significantly is the price always goes up, but we were able to secure it at the fourteen price.
John, you had mentioned in our department head meeting that the calls at EMS are up now. Is that calls and responses, one and the same, or?
Yeah, that's one and the same. I mean, that's counting total calls. It's not actual patient transports that's involved. I haven't, I haven't looked and I could easily look between patient transports and refusals, but I think historically there's not been a big jump in one versus the other, so.
Statistically.
Statistically, they stay about the same, so. And obviously, you know, you've got to respond even if it turns out to be no patients, so. The viability of the truck and stuff stays the same. You've still got to get there, you know, so.
Well, I know sometimes in visiting with the people with nine-one-one too, the ability for them to give the information is depending on good information coming from the caller.
Which is not always the case, but they do a real good job downstairs of getting the best information that they can for us. And, you know, we were real instrumental, part of you guys getting here quite a few years ago. I think when Brad was in charge of the dispatch center about regionally pushing out EMD to our region and Emergencies Medical Dispatch and really an initiative to get all the other counties in our region to get their people trained in Emergencies Medical Dispatch. So we were one of the first in our region that had it and really pushed it out to the other dispatchers in the region. Fortunately, we have, you know, the two people downstairs where I know some of the smaller are just one dispatcher and it's hard to be able to keep a caller on the line and dispatch at the, you know, units at the same time. And so some counties have to struggle with that, which, which we don't. But it certainly is helpful if you're the one on the other end of the line needing help and somebody's there that can understand what's going on and help you through it till we get there, so. And I know one minute always seems like twenty when you're waiting for help, not on the other end, so.
Well, it's a valuable service and like you say, the technology has improved so much and.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much done.
We're always waiting for efficiencies.
LED lights and stuff like that, so we don't have near the light replacement issues we have in the past. I mean, on these, you know, as technology changes, we kind of have to keep up with it. Of course, that always sometimes comes with a price, which is never down.
So will our next meeting then, you'll give a recommendation?
Yeah, I should be able, since we have, since we have one here, I shouldn't be any reason by next week to not have it, yeah. Not have it down, so.
Any other questions from the commissioner or comments?
So appreciate your submission.
It's an honor.
Appreciate you coming in this morning. Thank you.
Will be nice to have all four ambulances up.
To be, you know, reliable.
Reliable.
Well, and you want to spread those purchases out too, so I mean, that's a, that's a good plan, ain't it?
In oh-nine, we did buy two at once and, but we've tried ones at Harrington, ones up here. And in doing so, that's kind of broke their mileage up a little. We get less mileage in Harrington than here, so. So maybe we won't have to replace them both at the same time, so we, we have broke that up a little bit, so. And you're right, if we do get off of schedule too much, then we end up with needing two in a year, which is a pretty hefty chunk of change, so.
Okay. I think that's all then on this particular item. Thank you, John.
Yep.
We, next we have the consider, consideration of approval of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen RAPS grant.
That's the agreement from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to provide us the grant for two thousand fifteen for the RAPS program.
And the grant period is July first, two thousand fourteen to December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. And I think this is.
It's essentially the same as it has been in the past years, so.
And so any questions or comments from the commission? I'd go ahead and make the motion that we approve this grant application to KDHE on the RAPS program.
Second.
You have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Laburne, they want you to sign this.
I noticed that.
And include a check for. I think once they get someone's name there and they've signed it, they come back to them, so.
Yeah.
We still, every once in a while, get mailings and it'll be for Paul Whitehair or Sheila Vig or Joe Knoll and.
Get some over the net sometimes.
Okay. The other item we had was a, the bid replacement. It was an addition to the agenda on the roof at the transfer station. And I think the only concern I had, and Brad kind of covered it before you were, were here, but we probably need to send a letter to say that we're terminating that previous agreement.
I've seen, we get emails before from Brad.
So that part would be covered just so the, all parties are informed, okay.
But could he? But could he still pursue getting the rest of his money?
No, I, no, it doesn't appear, doesn't appear so here that there's a problem with that roof area. This is the one that I'm thinking of. No, maybe the other way around.
Because he didn't fulfill his terms of the contract, so we're, I mean, this is the quickest way to solve it, is really what we need to do.
But we need to send him a letter, though, that we're terminating, you know, for lack of failure to react to the warranty calls or whatever.
Sure.
I mean, that has to be done, done and done.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I haven't said anything yet, but I have a real problem with this. This bid doesn't include removing the roof. Is that right?
It does.
Huh?
It does.
I thought it doesn't.
It says.
Okay, I read it wrong.
Removing and installing the metal roof.
It doesn't.
Yeah, it's taken off the stuff that was put on defectively. And that might be why it's a little bit higher.
About the only thing is, it just says it doesn't include the disconnect or reconnect electricity, so wouldn't handle that separately.
We have Seth will do that with them. So that's one of the benefits of having a certified electrician on staff.
Okay.
So they won't disconnect the power stuff to get the boot and stuff forward, but Seth did well with them and do that, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was certified.
Yeah.
Electrician. That's great.
Oh.
You have some other concerns, Laverne, or?
Well, I don't know. I suppose, I just have concerns that I can't figure out why this, why it can't be fixed. It's just not fixable.
And I don't have pictures available. If Chancey's got to us, but if I was to show you the pictures of how poor they was put on, you'd understand. Holes were drilled where there were no beams underneath to attach them to into the metal. And instead of doing something to patch that hole, they just stuck some silicone over, around the boots and stuff where you should have seals. There were no seals placed. There were gaps, three quarters of an inch gaps around all that stuff left that way. On the eaves, on the vents, on the eaves, they used tubes and tubes of silicone to build up inches instead of putting the right piece in there. It just, it's beyond pathetic. That's the only description I can give you.
And I'll use over, Blue Tech put in some relocatables, well, one of the relocatables in another building, exercise room. They caulked, I mean, there was a hundred and some cocks where the, you know, we haven't looked at it, and then we went in and accepted. The biggest thing is that caulking doesn't stay forever.
No shrink or expand or?
Yeah, I mean, but they were, they were temporary buildings, so that's the reason we went in and accepted it.
And I showed a bunch of pictures to show you. I will give them to you, but they're, when you see them, you're going to go, oh, boy. Probably more than that.
Well, and I think, and I don't know if this will help on your concern, and I'll kind of direct this to Doug, but I, it's just that we want to, in a professional, workmanlike manner. And so, I mean, is this a viable solution to the step we would take to accept the bid, Doug? Or do you have thoughts on that you want to share?
Yes, it is, and it doesn't preclude the county from going back to the original contractor. So this is a, you've got to fix the problem. And this is the best way to do it, because requests to have it fixed have not been addressed. And so this is the only viable option to you to move forward in a timely fashion. If you want to wait for court litigation to go back through it, you'd have a greater problem at that time, simply because the repairs hadn't been measured and changed made.
And, you know, I mean, I place, I mean, $15,000, 480. I mean, this is a significant amount, and yet, like you say, we need to address this in a timely manner. And so this probably seems like a remedy that I'm comfortable with. And if, if the rest of you are, of course, we'll put it to vote if.
And this is the building that houses the chemical warehouse and then the shop area.
You know, the size of that building across there, it's, I guess I've been in it, you know, it's.
The south half is the warehouse where all the chemicals are stored, and then the scale, the scale operators in the very corner. And in the north, three quarters or so, maybe two thirds is the shop area where they maintain and service the vehicles and that stuff. And it was built, I think, what I'd tell you, it's maybe in the 70s, it's in the 70s. So the structure's still intact, it's just the roof is rusted and the metal was worn out, and that's why we were replacing it originally. So, and you know, you look at what we're protecting, the chemicals, and some of those chemicals alone, burn those, I mean, you'll tie in $15,000 in, in less than one pallet.
If it's in, in bags, it's not protected very well.
Yeah, so we really need to keep something over it, so.
Needs to be inside, away from the elements. So what we need really is just a motion to accept this from Wildcat Services, and also to direct Brad and Doug to send a letter explaining our action.
So moved.
Okay. All seconded. Any further discussion? So we have the motion, go ahead and accept the bid for Wildcat Services for $15,480. This is the replacement of the roof at the transfer station, and also directing Brad and Doug to have a letter sent to the previous contract person about our action as a remedy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. No other business then? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the motion, the second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for adjournment.